Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
Today we have not only... Name is Patrick Williams, Clark Summit resident. He's a disabled Army veteran who served from October of 1959 to October 1962, raising to the mark of Specialist 4th Class. These are numerous rewards throughout his military career. He retired from Colts. Like I said already, currently Clark Summit resident, but a very good friend of mine, Patrick Williams.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. If everyone would put their right hand over their heart and all veterans please hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Put...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We'll call to order this Commissioners' meeting, February 19th, 10:00 a.m. Reading and approval of the minutes. Kind of a motion to dispense with that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board, agenda items only.
Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Roads, Scranton. There is one, I just have one, it's a little bit picky, but there was one when I read it at home that said it was something about the solicitor letter. I'm not seeing it on here now. What happened to it? The one that just said, "See solicitor letter"? I'm not finding it right now.
On the agenda.
What numbers?
Right in the box.
Oh, yeah, okay. Attachments, yeah. And while I appreciate and value the solicitor's opinion, it would be nice to know what the grant is for with a lot more detail. So, just for the future reference, it would be nice to know what is being voted on.
Ms. Schumacher will explain that when it's coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Cummings, Old Forge. On the bond series that we're voting, you're voting on today, can you tell me what that's for? Is that just to pay off the two bonds that were in the paper?
Yes, Commissioner, they're refunding the series 2016 and the 2019... 2018, excuse me, bond issues.
So how much is the...
The savings is estimated at $5 million.
No, no, how much is the payoff for those?
2016 is 17 million and 2018 is 15 million.
And how much is the loan for?
40 million.
That's eight million over.
It's not to exceed 40 million dollars.
So is it going to be for 40 million?
We'll have Tom Durkin to ask that question when we come up.
Okay, well if that's the case, then I'd like to know why we're taking an additional eight million dollars out. Didn't we just raise taxes by nine million?
We'll have that question answered for you.
Well, I'd like to state, if we're going to take an eight million dollar loan out, according to the ordinance itself, it says it's to pay for projects, which looks like it's for the Globe. We raised taxes for that. You're going to take an eight million dollar loan out, you didn't need to raise taxes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Ordinance, second reading, 200052.
In accordance with the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 40 million dollars, determining that such bonds shall evidence non-electoral debt of the county specifying that such indebtedness is to be incurred to provide funds for a certain project of the county which consists of the following: One, currently refunding the county's outstanding general obligation note series of 2016. Two, currently refunding the county's outstanding general obligation note of series 2018. Three, planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, installing, furnishing, and equipping of all improvements and renovations to existing facilities of the county. Four, planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, and renovating and improving roads, bridges, and parks in the county. Five, purchasing capital equipment for use by the county. Six, additional capital projects of the county to the extent approved by the Board of Commissioners of the county. And seven, paying the costs and expenses of issuance of the bonds, setting forth the reasonable estimated remaining useful lives of the capital projects that are to be financed and refinanced by the bonds. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna is a Home Rule Charter county operating under the Home Rule Charter and not the laws, plan laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, the county in computation of the issuance and sale of one or more series of the general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 40 million dollars to provide funds for and towards certain projects of the county has determined that the bonds herein thereafter defined shall be offered for sale at a private sale by negotiation pursuant to the provisions of the Local Government Unit Debt Act of the Commonwealth and reenacted and amended. And has determined that a private sale by negotiation is in the best financial interest of the county. And whereas, the board has determined to accept the proposal of RBC Capital Markets, LLC Philadelphia, Pennsylvania as representative of itself, and PNC Capital Markets, LLC Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania for the purchase of the bonds. Whereas, the county has heretofore issued its 17 million original principal amount general obligation note series of 2016, a portion of which remains outstanding. Whereas, the county desires to authorize the current refunding of the outstanding refunded 26 note for the purpose of reducing the total debt service over the life of the 2016 note. Whereas, the county has heretofore issued its 15 million dollar original principal amount general obligation note series of 2018, a portion of which remains outstanding. Whereas, the county desires to authorize the current refunding of the outstanding refunded 2018 note for the purpose of reducing the total debt service over the life of the 2018 note. Now therefore being enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, and waffle session duly assembled as follows. Section 1, pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, the board hereby authorizes and directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 40 million dollars to be designated generally as County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, General Obligation Bond Series A of 2020. The bonds shall be issued and sold in accordance with the provisions of the Act by private sale by negotiation. In connection therewith, the board hereby finds and determines that a private sale by negotiation is in the best financial interest of the county. Section 2, the board determines that the debt to be incurred pursuant to this ordinance, which will be evidenced by the bonds, shall be non-electoral debt of the county. Section 3, a brief description of the project to be funded with the proceeds of the bonds is as follows. One, currently refunding the refunded 2016 note. Two, currently refunding the refunded 2018 note. Three, planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, installing, furnishing, equipping all improvements and renovations to existing facilities of the county. Four, planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, renovating, and improving roads, bridges, and parks in the county. Five, purchasing capital equipment for the use by the county. Six, additional capital projects of the county to the extent approved by the board. And seven, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the bonds. Section 9, proper officers of the county are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dunmore, Pennsylvania as the paying agent. Section 11, the bonds shall be executed in the name and on behalf of the county by the true or facsimile signature of at least two members of the board, and the true or facsimile official seal of the county shall be affixed thereon too. Section 22, the county hereby authorizes and directs the proper officers, agents, and employees to execute any and all other documents and to take any and all other action necessary in connection with the project to cause the refunded 2016 note and the refunded 2018 note to no longer be deemed to be outstanding as of the date of the delivery of the bonds. Section 25, the county hereby appoints and engages Stevenson Lee, PC to act as bond counsel to the county in connection with the issuance of the bonds and to facilitate the intent of this ordinance. Section 30, in the event of any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this ordinance shall be held invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect or impair any remaining provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this ordinance, it being the intent of the county that the remainder of this ordinance shall remain in full force and in effect. Section 31, all ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith, inconsistent herewith, shall be and the same expressly hereby are repealed. Section 32, this ordinance shall be effective in accordance with Section 8003 of the Act. Commissioners?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you are aware, this is the second reading of the ordinance, which if passed today will begin the process of refinancing the 2016 and 2018 loans that we have outstanding. To answer Commissioner Cummings' question, the 40 million dollars that's in the ordinance is only an upper parameter so that we could get the ordinance done and get it read without knowing exactly how much because there are closing costs involved. We don't know the exact payoff on the notes until we're going to close. So, the actual borrowing will be in the vicinity of 32 million dollars, which is the 17 that we borrowed in 2016, plus the 15 that we borrowed in 2018, minus a little bit of money that we've already paid off on the 17 debt, plus whatever the closing costs are. So, we are not borrowing an additional eight million dollars. It is simply a bond issue that is going to replace those two banknotes that we did. Having said that, I'll introduce Mike Vind, our financial advisor from Financial Solutions, as well as Brian Kozelansky from Stevenson Lee, our bond counsel.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Tom alluded, we are for your considerations and ordinance that would simply refinance the two existing loans outstanding, both of which were issued for capital projects authorized in 2016 and 2018 by the county commissioners. We're not extending the term, we're simply going from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate. The net effect of this, based on current market rates as of yesterday, would be a savings over the life of a little over five million dollars. And that's net of all estimated closing costs. Again, we're just doing a simple high to low refinancing. I also wanted to let the Commissioners know, as any bond issue, we go through a rating process with standard and pores to get the security rated, and they take a look at a lot of items and apply a rating to the county. The county has been rated A, stable outlook, for, God, several years, since 2015. They did release a report yesterday, they revised the rating to an A negative outlook, and their two primary concerns that they put in their public released report was the significant deterioration of reserves in 2019, as well as not making the full pension payments over the last several years. Because the county opened up the budget and increased that operating deficit, structural deficit on an annual basis, they said that they only put a negative outlook to see how things are going to progress over the next several years. That did not have a significant impact, and I believe that's why they weren't downgrade, the county wasn't downgraded a full notch to an A minus level. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time on the rating or the savings levels.
If we had not funded the pension, it could have conceivably, or would have conceivably been worse than an A negative?
That is what they put in their report, yes.
That's what they put in their report.
That, yes.
Okay, so it was necessary that we did that?
Based on the rating, that was cited as, the two things that were cited as to put the negative outlook was the deterioration of reserves in fiscal year 19, as well as the not making the full pension payments over the last several years.
Okay, thank you.
Does the report indicate that it would have definitively been reduced?
They do not mention anything, all they did was put the negative outlook on it based on those two facts.
And that negative outlook, namely not fully funding the pension fund, was cited in previous years?
That, that particular issue, as well as deterioration of the reserves in 19.
And the bond rating was not decreased in prior years due to the non-funding, fully funding of the pension fund?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that is a public issued document that came out yesterday. We have sent it up to the county, it's online for review on the MS system, which is the MSRB system, and you can take a look at that. They're an independent body, we give them the information, they ask questions, we answer the questions, and then they go to a committee and they come back with a rating.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Brian?
Just two points that I wanted to raise on the ordinance itself, because it was, the question was asked. All we are basically doing is refunding those two deals. On the 2018 issue, though, we have not drawn down all of those funds yet. So in addition to refunding what's outstanding on the 2018, we have to do the new money piece to have available the remaining proceeds of that loan. So it's really just substituting what we haven't drawn for that new money component. It's not increasing the amount that we originally committed to, we just have to characterize it as a new money piece of the deal. Second part on the 40 million dollars, one of the things the state does when they approve your issues is they don't just approve the outstanding principal amount, they approve each annual debt service payment. So what we try to do when we do the parameters resolutions is in each year, add a little bit of a cushion so that when they price the bonds and they move bond maturities around to get the best interest rates, we don't run into any issues on that parameters. And really, we do that solely so you don't have to re-advertise, you don't have to re-file. So there's a lot of cushion in those numbers, you're not borrowing up to the 40 million, but we have to put that in there. Each one of those years may have 200,000 dollars, and when you have a 25-year issue, it adds a lot to the principal amount, but that's not what the final deal is going to be.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, well on the ordinance, second reading, I would ask for a motion to approve the 200052.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Commissioners, after the meeting, I'll make sure that I email you copies of the standard and pores reports so that you guys can have them for your files.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 200051.
Approving current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County General Fund numbers, 297781-298644 inclusive, Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $5,681,269.78.
I would ask for a motion approving current payables.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 200045, entering into an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn, and Associates. Here to speak on that is Controller Gary DiBilio.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the annual audit of our county's pension plan, and the services are to be performed by McGreal, Merkel, and Quinn again this year at the same cost as last year.
Board have any questions?
Nope. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an engagement letter with McGreal, Merkel, Quinn, and Associates for Lackawanna County Retirement Pension Plan Audit for the year ended December 31st, 2019, for a fixed cost of 11,000 dollars.
Look for a motion on 200045.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 200046, approving a Pima grant agreement. Here to speak on that is Dave Hahn.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, Pima, for the 911 statewide interconnectivity funding grant agreement in the amount of $1,491,125.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here to ask your permission and ask for your signatures for the 1.491,125 for several projects in which we put in for the Pima grants for, for the year of 2020. The following, the following projects are 17,041.05 for Northeast Essie Net Maintenance Project, which is a connection between us and Monroe County via Microwave, which is, was applied for last year by a grant and paid for by a grant. 121,189.77 for Northeast Shared Dispatch Protocols, which we are, the 911 center would now be receiving a computerized dispatch, 911 questions to ask during certain emergencies for all positions up there. 196,650 for Lackawanna County Next Generation 911 GIS Data Development Project. That's so we can straighten out our GIS system and continue on with some equipment, additional equipment for our GIS. And 1.156,209,043 for our new 911 phone switch, which is almost at end of life from when we received it in 2013. So, they are, that's the, what we put in for the grant, that is monies in addition to our operating expenses, which have already been approved. So this is just, this is what they call 15% money from Pima, and it doesn't affect the county coffers whatsoever.
Does the board have any questions?
Nope. Thanks for hard work.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. I'd like a motion on Resolution 200046, approving the grant.
I'll make, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dave. Resolution 200047, accepting a recycling development grant. I'm here to speak on that is Barb Jigvenorley.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the recycling department development and implementation grant for a total of 10,036.
Good morning, Commissioners. This grant reimburses us for the equipment that we needed when we moved into this building to comply with the state mandate to provide recycling not only for our employees, but also for the public that enters our building. So all of the new recycling containers that you have seen, plus the existing ones that our employees and department heads brought from our former positions, this is a state mandate from Act 101. We've complied, and we are being reimbursed 10,000, 10,036 dollars for all of this equipment. So it goes from the desk where our employees are mandated to recycle their paper, to the hallways where there are collection bins that you've most likely seen, to the containers at all of the elevators, floors, and also, most importantly actually, the equipment needed by our buildings and grounds crew to collect it and properly take it for recycling. All I need are your signatures, and then they will, then we'll be able to get our money. Any questions?
Thank you. Board have any questions for Barbara?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion on 200047, accepting a recycling development grant.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 200048, approving a redevelopment assistance capital program grant. Here to speak on this is Brenda Sackel.
Good morning, Commissioners. This resolution is authorizing the filing and acceptance of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of Advocacy Alliance in the amount of 750,000 dollars. The Advocacy Alliance and the Friendship House project is to renovate existing buildings owned by the Advocacy Alliance and Friendship House to expand mental health services for children, their families, and adults in Lackawanna County. The estimated cost of the total project is 1.5 million, and therefore, the 750,000 would be the grant, and then they would match the 750, meaning 50%. This is a pass-through, so we would be administering this on their behalf, and they are going to work over the next few months to finalize the scope of the project.
Thank you, Brenda. Board have any questions for Brenda?
Whereas, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners supports economic development in the county, and whereas the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners acknowledges that the Advocacy Alliance, the Lackawanna County Base 501(c)(3), has been notified that the agency is the recipient of a 750,000 dollar redevelopment assistance capital program grant from the Office of the Budget Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners understands that this redevelopment assistance capital program grant will be used by the Advocacy Alliance to renovate existing buildings owned by the Advocacy Alliance and Friendship House to expand mental health services for children, their families, and adults in Lackawanna County. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners has agreed to be the applicant on behalf of the Advocacy Alliance for the submission of a formal application to the Office of the Budget Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in order to secure the grant funds. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners understands that as the primary sponsor, sponsor and applicant of this redevelopment assistance capital program grant, the county is responsible to ensure that the funds are utilized for economic development in a timely manner and to verify that the minimum 50% matched non-state funds are secured prior to the submission of the formal grant. The County of Lackawanna also understands its responsibility to ensure compliance with all grants, grant rules, and regulations on the redevelopment assistance capital program.
Board have any questions for Ms. Sackel?
No.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the grant application, 200048.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 200049, awarding arts and cultural mini-grants. Here to speak on that is Maureen McGuigan.
Morning, Commissioners. These are rolling 500 municipal grants for community projects, so Dixon City is applying for their Dixon City Days in the summer. Clark Summit is supporting a high school art show by Abington High at The Gathering Place, and Mayfield is funding their annual concert in the park in August.
Thank you. The board have any questions for Maureen?
No.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the arts and cultural mini-grants to the following community organizations: Clark Summit, borough 500 for an art exhibit for high school students at The Gathering Place; Dixon City Borough 500 for the Dixon City Days in August; Mayfield Borough 500 for the annual concert in the park in August.
On the Resolution 20049, a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 200050, accepting a grant from the Department of Environmental Protection. Here to speak on that is Rocco Genovese.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This grant is an extension of a cooperative agreement between Lackawanna County and Pennsylvania DEP. The goal of the program is to monitor and hopefully prevent the spread of mosquito-borne diseases such as West Nile virus and Triple E. The grant covers most, if not all, expenses incurred by the county during grant period, including salary, equipment, and treatment products. To give you a point of reference, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is currently To give you a point of reference, Lackawanna County submitted more than 24,000 mosquitoes for testing in 2019. We had two positives for West Nile virus, which were able to contain, and there were no reported human cases for the season. So in short, this is a very effective program, which has provided a very low cost to the county.
Thank you.
Be it resolved, the Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the 2020 Mosquito-Borne Disease Control Grant Program for January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, in the amount of $43,919.06.
Board have any questions for Rocco?
No.
Look for a motion to accept the Resolution 20050.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the Board.
Bay Farina, Scranton. I'd like to start off by addressing Commissioner Dominic. When you mentioned a couple weeks ago that you didn't want to raise taxes for 11%, I just really thought about that, and I really thought it was grandstanding. I say that because you never once criticized Notarianni or Mr. Chirmac for raising the taxes, and you never had -- there was no other opportunities. You didn't have any other ways to lower the taxes. You didn't come up with any other solutions, not a glimpse, not a glimpse of any other way, and you didn't chastise them. You didn't say one thing to them, "You shouldn't do this, you shouldn't do that, you could lower this." Did you even go over the budget to know what you could cut? Did you even try to cut it, so there wouldn't be that much of a -- nothing was said. All you kept on saying was, "You don't want the people, Scranton's raising their taxes, you don't want the senior citizens to lose their home," but you didn't come up with any alternative plans. So I saw that for what it is. I'm used to politics. One person says no, and they look good, and the other two say yes, and they look bad, but the next time, then they'll say no, and you say yes. It's all a game. I want to know, Mr. Dominic, who pays your salary? Who pays your salary?
I'm not answering that question.
Pardon me?
I'm not answering that question.
It's time for you to comment. We're not here to be quizzed.
Oh, yes, you are.
Oh, no, we're not.
Oh, yes, you are. You are accountable.
You have the opportunity to comment.
No, no, no.
She can answer -- we can answer that question after you're finished. You want to comment?
No.
Make a comment.
You have a right -- I have a right to get an answer while I'm asking you a question here, because you're not going to skirt this. I want to know -- well, I'll tell you who's paying your salary. The taxpayers are paying your salary.
Well, then you know the question, why would you ask?
Because I want to see -- she just apparently know, because she didn't want to answer the qualifications of her secretary.
Excuse me. Ma'am, she does know, and the advice of counsel, we advise them not to answer. It's a public comment period.
Yeah, this is a public comment period. Commissioners can address it under Commissioners Other Business if they feel that I want to.
Wait a minute. You're saying that I can't get any answers to any questions that I ask here?
It's not what we're saying at all.
What are you saying?
We're not going to answer it now.
Oh, you're going to answer it when I don't have a chance to rebut it, is that it?
It's absolutely it.
Well, you know, that's no transparency whatsoever, and it's a cop-out.
We're sitting here.
So then I have to come back two weeks later to address your answer, and then ask you another question, and then you're going to answer that, and then I have to come back another two weeks to answer that. You're very bad. That's what we put you -- not me, God knows, put you in office to represent the people. We pay your salary, all three of you, and you're telling me you don't have a right -- I don't have a right to get answers while I'm standing here? I don't think so. I don't think so, and I hope the reporter writes us that this -- County Commissioners do not want the people to know what's going on in the county, only after they address it, and we have no chance to question them on their answers at all. That is like doing a write-to-no letter. This is -- okay, so I'm going to say it again. What qualifications does this man have? The solicitor says you shouldn't answer, because probably because he doesn't have the qualifications, and he's just a friend of Debbie Dominic.
He's more than qualified.
Oh, yeah, then tell me.
But I will address your concerns at the Commissioners Other Business after the comments are finished.
Why are you afraid to tell me now?
Because this is how the order of the hearings are held.
Well, you should change the order, because when a person asks you a question, you should answer them. We didn't come here to --
We're not obligated to file.
You're not obligated to do anything.
Yes, we are.
Oh, are you?
Whether you like it or not.
You make --
Okay.
We're the people. We're the people. We pay your salary. If we ask you a question.
I'm well aware of who you are.
Then you should answer the question.
And again.
Oh, here we go. Here we go. So anybody that asks a question here is not going to get an answer until you give us comments later. Suppose they have something to say to your -- suppose they don't agree with your answer, what do we do? What do we do?
You ask a question, we can answer it.
Why can't you answer it right now? Why can't -- what is the big secret?
Again, I'm not here to debate you at this point.
Well, I know you're not, but I'm here to debate you because you're doing the wrong thing.
Okay.
Ma'am. There's a public comment period. Let me pin it. That's the period in which we're in. You can make whatever comments you desire. There's a three-minute limit. You're already past -- Five. No, it's a five-minute limit. Or five minutes, I apologize.
And I'm not past five minutes.
We almost had that point. All they're saying and all we're advising them.
I know what you said. You're saying, "Don't answer us in the other part of the meeting."
We have an order of it.
But why don't you change the order, because it's not right.
Let me just try to address your question.
Not my five minutes.
Let me just try to address it.
I wouldn't stop the clock.
Get to the Commissioners Other Business and make your comments respond accordingly, not just your and your --
Oh, I know that, but you tell me why you don't want to answer it here.
That's why, ma'am, you're past the comment period.
Well, I'm going to say -- well, because you kept on saying something, I'm also going to bring up reassessment. I don't think there should --
Not the case.
Oh. Okay. Well, then let me tell you something. You're not going to hear the end of this.
That's right.
Debbie Dominic, you're hiding stuff, and you don't want people to know the truth.
I think you're out of order.
Well, you're out of order, all three of you.
Yeah, I'm out of order, okay.
You're out of order.
Yeah.
Because you don't want people to know the truth.
That's not true.
You don't want them to answer you when you say something that's a lie, or you think is the truth.
Feel free to run for office.
Thank you.
What's that? I said, "Feel free to run for office if you do not like the way we are doing it."
I don't want to run for office, but I certainly don't think you should be sitting there, because you're not representing anybody in the county, any one of you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. God.
Joan Hoda-Wanett, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton.
Good morning.
If you can, during Commissioners Other Business, I'm curious as to whether we incurred any additional legal fees with regard to the prison this past pay period. I'm telling you, I'm not happy to see stories like we had on the 15th. Prison probe costs top $2.2 million. County dealing with aftermath of raid in guards who are still on paid leave. You might all -- I don't know whether you know this, and maybe you can't answer it, but I'd sure like to know when we're going to see the light at the end of the tunnel. This is like a sucking chest wound. We have better things to do with our tax money. Hopefully, we could get that thing put behind us. There was also an article on the 17th, Garage Leak, Erks County. Lackawanna may sue owner of Electric City facility over damage during Globe project. I hope you are aware that Scranton City Council is attempting to get Mr. Basaliga to come into the city for a public caucus to discuss the status of repairs to the Electric City garage. You might want to sit in on that one, so watch for that to come up. Commissioner Dominic, I want to compliment you on appearing yesterday at that hearing in front of the state on local tax issues and the need for reform. My disappointment was largely that that was not well advertised, so that the general public would have come to attend. And as far as I know, Electric City did not have the opportunity to tape it. So I don't know, other than Jeff renting out his little tape recorder, because he was there, a lot of useful information was passed out. I was interested in the comments of the Pennsylvania Economy League and the Pennsylvania Municipal League on why reforms are drastically needed for local government tax structures and issues with home rule charters. And on the issue of the County Commissioners' agenda for these meetings, I used to ask Andy Wallace again and again to make sure that each item was self-explanatory, whether the way it was printed on the agenda sheet itself or in the backup. And here's what I would recommend, that the speaker for each item, be it an ordinance or a resolution, be asked to write a short paragraph explaining what the ordinance or resolution is all about, and that becomes an attachment with additional attachments if necessary that gets on your website, so that the public comes here prepared, understanding what you're going to be addressing. Maureen Schumacher should not have to get up and ask, "What is Resolution Number 48 all about?" Because when you look at the solicitor's opinion, you don't know what they're talking about. I don't think that's very hard to do, and I think, you know, you have an obligation for full disclosure and transparency. Short, well-written paragraph becomes an attachment, everybody can read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it costs $8 million for closing costs. So when will you know the final numbers on that? Do you know?
What's that, Commissioner?
On the bond that you're taking out?
We plan on closing, I think, March 25th is when the closing will be. That's when the final number will be done.
Are you going to announce that?
Pardon me?
Will you announce that? The total number of what you're taking out at that time?
I don't think we typically announce that.
Yeah, I think so. All right, I'll be waiting for it. I'm very disappointed in a couple things, and, you know, it'll probably be my last meeting up here. I just wanted to -- I was so upset over the tax increase that I had to come up here and voice my opinions, because I still feel it was completely inappropriate, what you did. I expected it from Commissioner Notarianni. I did not expect it from Commissioner Chirmac. In 2015, I had a decision to make, and everybody knows what that was, and this is exactly why, because I didn't want reassessment and increased tax, and that's why I chose the way I went back in 2015. You're seeing the results now of what my decision would have been, what would have happened if I had a different decision. First thing that you did, out of the box, was take the voice of the people away by putting a five-minute restriction on them. Completely disagree with that, completely. As far as this bond, I'll continue to watch it. And as with the downgrading, back in 2015, Commissioner Dominic, I appreciate the questions that you had grilled our CFO on. You did an excellent job on that. And it was brought out that, yes, pensions have not been funded for years. However, we had $14 million increase in one year in our pension. Now, I don't know what the numbers are now, because I don't obviously have those in front of me or available to me, but that's why we felt comfortable with not putting that additional $500,000 into that pension fund. But it's interesting to see that a downgrade comes when we had a $30 million surplus. We had pensions that are doing well, and anybody in the public that has a 401K knows how well their retirements are doing. So for anyone to say that our pensions aren't doing well or making money, my comment to them was, then maybe we need to find somebody else to do the pension. That's what I said in 2019, because there should be no way we're losing money or not making any money in our accounts. As far as the deterioration of reserves, in 2015, our reserves were 8.5 million. Four years of my administration, it went to 30 million in reserves. So why they're doing a downgrade based on deterioration of reserves is beyond me. You still have a reserve account in your 2020 budget as well. If you guys couldn't get together throughout this year and start making cuts like we did in 2016 and '17, that's on you, not me. But along with that, going through this budget again, when I was here last time, I said, you know, Mr. Chirmac has a habit of repeating what other people say. I said that the numbers were a mess. Well, what I was referring to was the new numbers that I received, because they're all over the place. I have all the reports. 20 million was the first estimate by Tom in December. Now, all of a sudden, I have the new numbers, which are 22 million for the Globe. But that aside, we had so many bills that were unexpected because of the move. We had double utilities, we had double rents that we weren't counting on paying for 2019. So I kind of understand a little bit on the bond rating with those costs, but what they should have realized is they're one-time costs. You all aren't going to have those costs this year. So that should have helped your 2020 budget, and I don't know why the numbers aren't -- I'm still going through it, but I will figure it out, what happened there, because I'll be working on it for a while. It doesn't take a week to figure out what's in a $200 million budget, hate to tell you. So I'm very disappointed that somebody -- that our rating was down, but I think you could also look to the AG, who -- I mean, these costs should not have happened with that -- with the prison issue. It shouldn't.
Your time is up.
Oh, my time is up. Well, I disagree with those expenditures, and I think there's a lot of problems that happened, but I think we handled them well, and I'm proud of the job I did. I'm very unhappy. Jared, like I said, Commissioner Notarianni, I expected you to raise the taxes. I knew that was coming. But Commissioner Chirmac, sorry, I'm very disappointed in what you did. Thank you.
Charles Brewer, Greenfield Township. Ms. Notarianni, I know if you are aware, but at the end of the last meeting, after the meeting was adjourned, the mic was still hot, and you used some foul language to describe the people that spoke at that meeting, and you should be ashamed of yourself for that. It is on the video. You can clearly hear it. Mr. Chirmac, regarding the tax increase, you had two opportunities, all right, and you failed the people. You didn't have to second the motion, and you did, failure. You didn't have to vote for it, and you did, another failure. Since it appears that you were ignorant of the consequences of your actions to the Lackawanna County citizens, I'm going to educate you with a few examples. These are real people in Lackawanna County, not going to use their last names. Donnie and Joanna have four children between the ages of two and seven. Donnie said, "Gee, I'm not going to be able to take my wife out to dinner that much anymore, or maybe not take the kids out to a movie as much as we do." Frank, a widower, all right, on a single income, lost his wife two years ago, all right? Doesn't know what he's going to do and how he's going to pay these tax increases. He's very upset. Steve has rental property in Peckville. He doesn't have leases. He's going to raise his rent immediately, so it's going to affect his tenants. Mike, who has rental property in Carbondale, he has leases. He can't raise his rent. He's going to have to eat that tax increase. But he said during the next round of leases, he's going to have to recoup his losses and raise his rent for future tax bills. Jim, a mechanic, and he has a garage on the -- by the county line, by Susquehanna County. He's in Lackawanna County. He's going to raise his prices. His fear is he's going to lose his business to two or three garages that are right over the county line in Susquehanna County. Dan, who owns lawn and garden business, he's raising his prices. It's going to affect his people, it's going to affect his customers. So he's going to pass that cost on to his customers with increased prices, or lose Laura has a daycare center, all right? She's going to raise her costs or transfer those costs over to her clients, whose children she takes care of. You just took $9 million out of the county economy with what you did. So these are just a few examples of the consequences of your action. I don't want to hear -- we don't want to hear your lame excuses, we don't want to hear your talking points, and we don't want to hear your blame game antics. You have one more opportunity, Mr. Chirmac, to save face. You can repeal the tax increase, or you could resign. At the last meeting, you said you won't resign, and whether we like it or not. Well, we don't like it that you're sitting in that Commissioner's seat with what you did. What's been said around the county about you is that you are now the county's number one villain. And Commissioner Dominic, thank you for taking into consideration the people's consequences of the increased taxes. I hope you continue that. At least you understood what the implications were. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners Other Business?
I'd like to address a few things. The first thing is that with regard to Joan and your concern regarding the correctional officers that remain on paid leave, that is being addressed. I can't disclose exactly what is occurring because it's still in progress, but we are moving in the right direction of getting people back to work. With regard to Fay, I just want to say that, number one, I'm not driven by what will or will not look good politically. I'm driven by what I think is best for the residents. I'm not here, I didn't find, I don't find criticizing my co-commissioners to be very productive. So while I may not have agreed with their decision to pass the 11.3 tax increase, I'm not going to stand up here and insult them or criticize them either, because I just do not find that that is very productive. We have to work together for four years, and we may disagree, but we try to respect each other's opinions on the topics. The reason you indicated that I, at the last meeting, you criticized me because I didn't call you back. And I did last week.
Five weeks later.
I was in the Globe by myself. It was, I don't know, 5:00, and I said to you that I would give you as much time as you wanted, that I had a lot of time to talk and address all your concerns. You refused to talk to me, told me you would talk to me at the public meeting, and then hung up on me, which means that your only goal here is to insult us. I'm not finished.
Wait one second. I didn't hang up on you. I said, "I appreciate very much that you called me, but thank you very much, and I would talk to you at the meeting. I was very appreciative that you called, and I told you so." So don't say that I said I wouldn't talk.
You need to sit down, or you're going to be removed. Don't remove her.
You can remove me if you want.
With regard to the tax increase, I did have conversations with my co-commissioners regarding other options. We did discuss them at length. Again, it was two to one. They decided one way, I decided the other. Because I did not stand up here and criticize them and tell the public every single thing that we spoke about does not mean that those conversations did not take place, because they did. None of us entered that, that, none of us reached that decision without really having to dig deep and decide what was best for the residents and how we chose or what our decision was going to be with regard to the issue. Again, we split on that issue, but I try to respect my fellow co-commissioners, and for that reason, I'm not going to say anything derogatory about either of them. Chirmak, Commissioner Chirmak has taken a beating, and I will tell you that he really struggled with his decision. Whether that means anything to anyone, I will tell you, I witnessed it firsthand. The whole reason why, at the end, and I'm going off memory here, but at the end of 2018, I think we had a $20 million surplus. We had around an $8 million deficit in 2019, which brought us down at the end of 2019 with, I think, it was a $19 million surplus. We have an estimated deficit of $6 million for 2020. I think this is right, Tom? Correct me.
You need to correct me.
Okay. My argument was to not fully fund the pension this year, but to use some of the surplus to cover the deficit and to try to work this year to cut costs, increase revenue, and then address the pension next year. The pension has not been fully funded since 2006 for 2005. I don't believe that it's the right way to go, to ignore the pension fund. However, in that situation, I chose the lesser of two evils, which in my opinion was to not raise the tax and to not fully fund the pension fund, to give me an opportunity to try to make a difference this year in hopes of not having to raise the taxes at all, or at least not to the level of 11.3%. Additionally, what I found problematic is that, as an attorney, I don't like to deal with speculation. I like to deal with informed, I like to make informed decisions based on knowledge. And even though standards and poor have consistently, according to our CFO, indicated that they were unhappy with the fact that we had not fully funded the pension, prior practice shows that we had not fully funded the pension, and despite that fact, they did not downgrade our bond rating. So I thought it would be in our best interest to protect the residents, all of the residents, but most significantly Scranton residents, who are going to be looking at a total of a 17.1 tax increase when you consider county, city, and school, to, like I said, take our chances and cover the deficit and address the pension next year. I did have ideas. They were discussed with our co-commissioners. They have ideas. Commissioner Chirmak and I will be doing efficiency inspections of the departments, and we are, all three of us, trying to explore opportunities to increase revenue and decrease costs. As far as my assistance qualifications, it is not that I ever wanted to withhold information from anyone. My problem was that I felt as though he was being addiction-shamed and that he would not have gotten the attention that he had gotten had he had not had issues back in 2014. As I indicated previously, he has five years of sobriety, and there are many people who don't reach that milestone. There are a lot of people who, there are a lot of people who can't even get through six months, a month. We have a lot of people dying, so he should be applauded for the miles, the benchmark that he reached. The fact that he had problems in 2014 does not disqualify him as a confidential assistant. I needed somebody that I could trust. I trust him unconditionally. He has done nothing but prove to me that he is more than qualified. He gets me where I need to be. He keeps my calendar straight. He is great with the general public, who call us quite often on a daily basis. He is more than qualified, and I am even more confident in my decision to hire him, and I would not change a single thing with regard to that hire. As far as who pays me, I'm well aware that the taxpayers pay us. But I had our two lawyers, who are very well-versed, telling me not to answer, and I'm going to listen to them, even though I am a lawyer. They are here to advise me. If there's something you would like to know beyond that, you have the right to file a right-to-know request. And I just want to say that I was snarky when I said that you could run for public office, and I apologize, I should not have been snarky like that. But we are criticized quite often, and it's easy to criticize, but it's not easy to get up and do this and put yourself in the hot seat to be criticized about every little thing that you do or did not do. So I apologize for that snarky comment, but I do stand by it, that if there are people that think they can do better, I encourage them to run for public office and make a change. That's what I did. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chirmak?
Just a couple of things. You know, this taxing is not just a problem here in Lackawanna County. It's a problem throughout the state. Senator Blake has some things going on, and I'll give these out to anybody that wants one. Let's see, Dixon City, there was already a couple of things. Property tax and rent rebate outreach schedule. They have assistance for people that need it. Dixon City is Thursday night, February 20th. Scott Township, there's another meeting, the 24th. I have some information here. Explains what they can do. There's also other programs, the veterans. For 100% disabled veterans, there's property tax waivers. POWs, which I learned this week when I was at the event for the pro-cop veteran that was murdered in Germany. POWs also have opportunities for property tax waivers. So there's information. You just have to ask. If I don't know the answer to that question, I'll find out the answer. Veterans Affairs has a lot of information, and I'm sure Senator Blake's people at his program would answer any question that somebody might have. So feel free to come up and get these. I'll have them right here. I have one of these books from Veterans Affairs. He's got lots. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
The actions of the last four years of the county commissioners did result in a decrease in our bond rating, one from A to A negative. There's no question about it. Had we not done what we did, it could have conceivably gotten worse. This refinancing will save the county $5 million. To continue to do the same thing they've been doing for the last 20 or 30 years, do the same thing and expect different results is nothing more than insane. We did start off with a surplus prior to the last set of commissioners. We had a $6 million deficit, operating deficit this year, $8 million last year. You shake your head, it is what it is. The pension hadn't been funded. It's an issue that had to be addressed. I understand people's concerns. I'm very sympathetic to that, and we'll work hard to make sure it does not happen again. But that's basically, there were no options at this point. That's all I have. Look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that call.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.